Go ahead and get started. Welcome to the Planning Commission. Please remember to turn off your cell phones. Also, the parking validation machine for the garage under City Hall is located at the rear of the chambers. Extra credit for those of you who took transit or rode your bike or scooter here today. First up, we're going to do the salute to the flag.
[inaudible]
All right, so let it be shown that we have all commissioners present except for, we are missing Commissioner Allen and Commissioner Oliverio. And with that, can we go to the summary of hearing procedures?
Welcome to a meeting of the San Jose Planning Commission. The following is a summary of the Planning Commission's hearing procedures. If you want to address the commission, please fill out a speaker card located on the table with audio-visual technician and deposit the completed card in the basket. There are also speaker cards in the back of the chambers and at the side entrance. The procedure for this hearing is as follows. After the staff report, applicants and appellates may make a five-minute presentation. The chair will call out names on the submitted speaker cards in the order received. As your name is called, please line up in front of the microphone at the front of the chamber. Each speaker will have two minutes. Speakers using a transmitter will have four minutes. After the public testimony, the applicant and appellate may make closing remarks for an additional five minutes. Planning commissioners may ask questions of the speakers. Response to commissioner questions will not reduce the speaker's time allowance. The public hearing will then be closed, and the Planning Commission will take action on the item. The Planning Commission may request staff to respond to the public testimony, ask staff questions, and discuss the item. If you challenge these land use decisions in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at this public hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. The Planning Commission's action on rezonings, prezonings, general plan amendments, and code amendments is only advisory to the City Council. The City Council will hold public hearings on these items. Section 20.120.400 of the municipal code provides the procedures for legal protests to the City Council on rezonings and prezonings. The Planning Commission's action on conditional use permits is appealable to the City Council in accordance with Section 20.100.220 of the municipal code. Agendas and a binder of all staff reports have been placed on the table near the door for your convenience. Thank you.
All right, so moving on to the substantive portions of this meeting, we will start with public comment. This is the portion of the agenda where if folks want to speak about items that are not on the agenda, they are welcome to do so and take up to three minutes. I don't have any speaker cards for folks who want to speak in the public comment section, so I am going to go ahead and move on to deferrals and removals from the calendar, which it looks like there are no items under three, which brings us to item number four, the consent calendar. So, any motions for the consent calendar, or A? Motion to approve by Commissioner Caballero and a second by Commissioner Yesny. Anyone want to speak to their motion? All right, all those, well, I guess we need to vote, yes?
Yes, you do.
Caught in the custom to just do it. Roll call. Yeah. Would you like to speak to your motion? Your second on the motion? Please do while we wait for the technician to bring up the screen.
I thought it was a very nice-looking building. Not exactly a flat roof, it had some little elevation changes. So for a, on that street, for a daycare center, I thought it would, it's going to be a very positive addition to the scenery.
Great. Okay, we'll go ahead and do a roll call vote, starting with, and for the record, let it be known that Commissioner Allen has arrived. So, Commissioner Allen, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
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 All right, motion carries. Moving on then to the public hearing, where there are no items, so we're going to go on to the general plan hearing, starting, and just want to note that Commissioner Oliverio is arriving, or has arrived. So, agenda item number seven, the general plan consent calendar. We have one, two, three, four items on consent, and I wanted to ask if there were any speaker cards, because I thought that I did see one walked down, and also wanted to ask if anyone wanted to pull anything from consent. Okay, this is, I need to see what this is for. So, we have a request to speak on item C, GP 19-004, so we'll pull that. Yep, 7C. So we'll go ahead and pull that one. And Commissioner Allen?
Yeah, sorry, I forgot we were talking about the general plan consent calendar. Could I respectfully request that we pull item 7A, please?
And so, we have a request to pull 7A, so we will, we will pull 7A and 7C. Any other requests? Motion to approve item 7B, would you like to include D as well? Okay, motion to approve 7B and 7D, the balance of the consent by Commissioner Griswold, is there a second on that motion?
I'll second that.
A second by Commissioner Allen. Commissioner Griswold, would you like to speak to your motion? Commissioner Allen, would you like to speak to your second?
I'm satisfied, thank you.
Okay, let's go ahead and, can we bring up the vote on our screen? That might be a no. It's not working, okay, we will continue with the roll call. Commissioner Allen?
Aye.
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 Aye. All right, motion carries unanimously. All right, so let's go ahead and start with item 7A, starting with a staff report.
Evening, Ms. Chair and Commissioners. Item 7A is General Plan File Number 18-010, is an amendment to, sorry, Q. Land Fund Supervising Planner for the General Plan Team. And the item GP 18-010 is an amendment to the Vision San Jose 2040 General Plan Land Use Transportation Diagram to change the land use designation from rural residential to residential neighborhood on an approximately 2.6-growth acre site located on the west side of Diamond Heights Drive, approximately 200 feet south of Central Road. The site is comprised of three parcels located on the west side of Diamond Heights Drive, approximately 200 feet south of Central Road, includes a fence maintenance storage area of 5,500 square feet of the southernmost parcel. The site is bordered by single-family homes to north, east, and southwest, and a recreational fields and tennis courts of the Valley Christian High School to the southwest and southwest across from Diamond Heights Drive. The prevailing neighborhood has an average density of 7.5 dwelling units per acre. The proposed residential neighborhood land use designation is applied broadly throughout the city to encompass the most of the established single-family residential neighborhoods. The intent of the designation is to preserve the existing character of these neighborhoods and to strictly limit new development to infill projects, which closely conform to prevailing existing neighborhood character and should be integrated into the existing neighborhood pattern. New infill development should conform to the General Plan Designation Design Guidelines for residential neighborhoods and will be limited to a density of eight dwelling units per acre or the prevailing neighborhood density, whichever is lower. The proposed general plan amendments to residential neighborhood will be consistent with the predominant land use designation of the surrounding neighborhood. The residential neighborhood designation furthermore would require a compatible new development on the project site to be consistent in density and character of the neighborhood, which is in alignment with the form-based major strategy in the general plan. Additionally, consistent with General Plan Goal LU11 and Policy CD 4.3, future infill and residential development would have to conform to the existing character of the neighborhood in terms of density, lot size and shape, massing, and neighborhood form and pattern. Prior to construction of a development, a rezoning and development permit will be required as part of the entitlement process. The future development will be assessed by multiple city departments, including Public Works, Transportation, Housing, Parks, Recreation, Neighborhood Services, and others to comply with state and local regulations, and may also be required to contribute fees and improvements that will enhance the surrounding neighborhoods. Examples of contributions may be upgrades to the water infrastructure, feed towards maintaining existing parks, and improvement to street frontages. In terms of public outreach, a committee meeting occurred on July 7th and received no public attendance. For the sequel clearance, the initial study negative declaration was circulated in September 2019 and received no public comments. Staff recommends approval of the proposed general plan amendment to change the site's land use designation from rural residential to residential neighborhood, and is consistent with the form-based major plan strategy and other goals and policies of the general plan, which promote consistent development patterns within existing neighborhoods. While the general plan limits residential development in neighborhoods that are not within growth areas, the proposed land use designation is consistent with the surrounding neighborhood and a similar residential density and development pattern would be achieved under the amendment. This concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you. Are there any questions of staff? Oh yeah, does the applicant wish to speak? No. He shook his head. To clarify, the applicant does not want to speak to the issue. Okay, great, thank you. All right, are there any questions or comments from my fellow commissioners? Commissioner Griswold?
So I had two questions on this. The first is, is there any history of why the site was designated rural residential in the first place? Or information about, about that?
Jared Hart, Planning Building and Code Enforcement. Yes, the site was designated rural residential based on the current zoning and its, the density that's allowed under the current zoning, so at the time of the last comprehensive update of the general plan, I think the rural residential was matched up to the existing zoning on the site, the PD zoning.
There wasn't any sort of rationale of keeping it at a lower density than what's being proposed here in the residential neighborhood?
Right, I think it was primarily based on what was allowed on the site.
And was it, it was a PD zoning, correct, Jared?
PD zoning.
Yeah, that was never effectuated.
Correct.
Then I guess the second component to this is, when we're looking at densifying a use under a general plan amendment and allowing more residential in a non-growth area, if it, if conformity or consistency with the surrounding, surrounding land uses is what allows us to do that, then wouldn't that be able to be used in a lot of different circumstances? Like, where do we draw the line if you're drawing lines where one side is a little lower density and then the other side is at a higher density?
Yeah, I think it primarily depends on, on the context of the neighborhood and what's being proposed. In this case, it's, you know, the, the change is relatively minor in that while the residential neighborhood designation won't allow significantly more density than, than under what's currently allowed, but would allow density consistent with, with what's surrounding the current site. I mean, I think that would hold true, you know, across the city as we look at other general plan amendments that are outside of growth areas, and we would look at the context of the, the surrounding neighborhood.
And I know that you can't go back with the crystal ball, but if it had, say the property had been zoned in an R18 situation back when the designation of RR was being considered, do you think that it would have been deemed to be residential neighborhood under the general plan provisions before?
I would think so, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Commissioner Allen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Couple of questions on this. First of all, just a, I should have sent this in an email, I apologize. There appears to be a typo, not only in the staff report, but in the Exhibit A of the resolution on this item, it's page five of the resolution, Exhibit A, when it refers to the site located on the west side of Diamond Heights Drive. I'm not by any means a navigational expert, but it's very clearly on the east side of Diamond Heights Drive, and I visited the site myself yesterday, so I'm pretty sure. So just, just to clarify that, if it's in the staff report, I don't really care, but if it's in the resolution, that's, that's a bigger deal, so.
Thank you for, for, yeah. Identifying that, yeah.
And I apologize that I didn't send it to you via email beforehand, so I don't mean to call you out there.
No problem, no, you appreciate that.
Cool.
Good catch.
My, I was, to Commissioner Griswold's question, I can't, I wasn't here, I don't have a crystal ball to go back either, so I wasn't here at the time when we approved putting a school on top of this hill in the first place. Personally, I would not have supported that at the time, but that ship has sailed, as has much of the development on this hillside, but I did visit the site yesterday, and I can certainly see why it was designated rural residential, and it did not have the R18 zoning in the first place, because it's a hillside, and it's similar to a project that we heard, I think my first or second meeting on the commission in Almeden Valley, I want to say it was almost the same applicant, but where they were trying to squeeze a number of extra living units, shall we say, single-family homes into a parcel on a hillside, where I deemed, and the commission ended up deeming it was inappropriate, and I still feel after visiting the site yesterday, that it would be inappropriate to continue to develop this hillside when we can do so much better to focus infill in other places, and I just don't feel it's an appropriate place to develop, period. So, I'll be voting against the, whatever motion happens to come up, I'm happy to make a motion to decline staff's recommendation.
Do you want to go ahead and make a motion?
I'm happy to make the motion, that we reverse staff's recommendation and instead take the position that this is inappropriate, and that should not move forward.
Is there a second on that motion? I'll go ahead and second the motion.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Oliverio?
Thank you, Chair. You know, since, you know, this is a school property, albeit private, not public, and I think a lot of the land issues that are going to come before this body and the City Council in the future will be schools themselves looking at trying to develop property adjacent to them and potentially for their own employees. I guess a question for staff is, that what they're asking for wouldn't really allow, for example, the density of apartment-level type of development to house staff or other people, this is frankly just single-family homes.
Yeah, so if the average density of the surrounding homes is, I believe, around seven and a half or so dwelling units per, per acre, and so if a development proposal were to come in, we'd take kind of a, you know, another cut, another closer look at that and look at what the, the density of the surrounding neighborhood is, and then that's what we would determine in terms of the density allowed on the site. So, yes, I mean, we would, with the land use designation, it's looking for development that is compatible with and consistent with the surrounding neighborhood, so we would envision single-family homes on, on the site.
Fair enough. And I think for many times that people talk about infill development within the city, and there's multitudes of infill development, right? There's infill development next to transit, where you can get significant density, and then there are underutilized parcels where a private property owner wants to come forward and put something on there, and I think, I haven't really heard city council members discuss that they think certain parcels should be passed on in general, that they feel that infill development is good because it's within the existing city infrastructure. So I'm inclined to not support the motion, I believe that this is, albeit there's a slightly different geography here, at the end of the day, it does allow, we have allotted for some of that, and I wanted to see the applicant, I know, I assume you're representing the Valley Christian, you didn't speak when the opportunity came, but I just wanted to ask you, from your, from your standpoint, as representing the applicant, your perspective on the item.
Are we opening the public hearing?
Was it closed?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Commissioner. I didn't speak in the beginning because there were no questions that were asked of, of the applicant, though Commissioner Allen indicated that he had some questions, but I didn't know how to address any questions you might have, so thank you for the opportunity to do that. One of the things that's always very difficult in general plan amendments is that not all general plan amendments come forward with specific proposals. We entered into the process in the latter part of last year and didn't have an opportunity to formulate a particular project, but I will tell you, this is an application by Valley Christian Schools, it is their intention, although understanding in general plan amendment, there's no restrictions that you place on the approval, but it is their intention to use this property to do teacher housing or housing in support of their faculty. You know that it's a critical issue these days, so that's the intention here. I would let you know that there are provisions in the general plan under this category that the density can rise above the eight dwelling units per acre, we're not proposing that particularly yet, if we do a planned development zoning, you may see that. The provisions generally relate to the context of the development, and in this particular context, if you've been out at the site, you know it is detached, elevated, from the property that is to its north, and to generally, almost to its, to its east. There would be no intention to take river view and extend it through onto Diamond Heights, so you have somewhat of an isolated community whose only access would be along Diamond Heights from Central Road. So there, we believe, Commissioner Allen, that there are differences between this. Its rural residential designation goes back many years. The city planning department and the city does not do a good job of looking at individual land uses and determining the more appropriate land uses. As staff indicated, they simply took the existing zoning that was done in the early 1990s by a different property owner and applied a rural residential designation. I would parenthetically insert, without any analysis of the appropriate land use or the appropriate density. And so when we came forward this time, it was simply matching the designation of residential neighborhood that is now in the general plan. As many of you know who have been on the commission for a while, prior to 2040, there were multiple residential designations, they began to segregate into, are you doing eight? Are you doing 12 to 25? Are you doing eight to 16? And you collapsed it down. This rural residential neighborhood is a designation that probably encompasses 80% to 85% of the residential land uses in this site, and I would suggest to you that this site is no different than Communications Hill, which has been approved for much higher residential development. It's not a, it's not a, it's not on the edge of the city, it's on a hillside that's in the city, so we believe that, and staff has obviously supported our belief, that this is an appropriate designation, and I would ask you to vote in favor of that this evening. Thank you.
Thank you for the comment, and I just want to say, sometimes this planning commission, you know, different projects will come forward and the density has been decided prior, and there's a lot of discussion up here generally on the planning commission of upping the density on every project, so just because you haven't submitted yet, I would encourage you, if this is going to be for housing to support the school, to go for a higher density. And then, so thank you, and I just won't be supporting the motion on the floor. Thank you.
Commissioner Yesny?
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. Starting with the existing designation, rural residential probably never should have been approved on this site. If you read the definition of rural residential, it's an area that is already, it's for an area that's developed with very low-density residential on the fringe of the city. So, this was, at a point in time when the city was, staff was looking at the entire city, this kind of slipped under the radar. So, if rural residential isn't the right designation, what is? What troubles me is, one, it is a hillside, two, there were endangered plants found on the school site, and three, it's in a landslide zone. So, this property, as far as we know, may not be appropriate for high-density residential, we don't really know at this time. There are policies built into the general plan that will require the property owner and any developer to look at the geology, the future grading, and that also has to be consistent with the surrounding land uses, as well as being safe. Yes, we need infill housing, for one thing, and two, we need infill housing built safely on appropriate locations, and I don't think, at this point, with the information available to us, that we know what that's going to be in the long term. I look on this neighborhood residential, that's what's being proposed, right? As a holding zone. It may or may not be appropriate, and if it can't be developed with nice little single-family 6,000-square-foot lots on public streets, and it probably can't, they're going to have to do something else, which may involve clustering the development. If it can't be done in this designation, then they're going to have to go through the general plan process again. But at least, we know that rural residential isn't the right fit. In the absence of a lot of specific information, which we don't usually get for a general plan amendment, as far as I'm concerned, the neighborhood residential is a perfectly good holding category.
Thank you, I appreciate the comments from my fellow commissioners, I also appreciate comments from the applicant, too. In this particular case, I, I wasn't actually expecting to make a motion, because I figured I'd be an outlier on this issue, to be honest with you. Personally, again, if I had to go back, and I was on the commission at the time, I wouldn't have been all that excited about Communications Hill, to be honest with you either, I know it's brought a good deal of housing and opportunity to our city, but I just don't think it was an appropriate development in the first place, but again, the ship has sailed, and so has the ship sailed on a lot of other projects on this particular hillside, I just think it'd be a good opportunity for us to hold the line at some point. And I do support, staff did note that there are policies within the general plan that this is inconsistent with, and I would side more with those than the policies where it is consistent. So, while I agree with Commissioner Yesny, that I do think, I wouldn't object necessarily to RN as a placeholder, I haven't heard any guarantees tonight that that's going to be the case, or that's not going to be what they want eventually on this site, so at this point, I would just be inclined not to change it at all and ask the applicant to come back when they have something more defined. And I'm, and again, I, I'm fully supportive of employee housing for schools. My mother was a public school teacher, my brother was a public school teacher, I was a public school district employee myself, but I try my very best not to use that as any sort of justification pro or con in these situations, it's strictly on the land use, so thank you.
So I'm going to go ahead and ask some questions of staff, maybe question. So I'm, from more of a general perspective, one of the things that struck me when I was reading the staff report on this one was, like, when we're looking at general plan amendments, I'm looking for a reason why, some sort of compelling reason why we are seeking an amendment I'm looking for a reason why, some sort of compelling reason why we are seeking an amendment. And so on this one, I was, I mean, A, is that kind of the right way to go about it, would you say? And just helping folks up here and in the audience and watching from home understand, you know, when someone submits a request to you for a general plan amendment, what is the reasoning and rationale that you go through to say, gee, this is something we should grant? And I know that you compare it to the policies in the general plan, but for me, it's like, why? What is the compelling reason we would entertain this notion? You know, having been on the general plan task force, certainly, we, at the general document, and mistakes can be made, and so I can see general plan amendment applications as being something that clear up mistakes and also seek to change something that, maybe something has changed, or there is a really compelling reason why we should do something. So, long-winded answer to just kind of, I was just baffled, like, why? Why seek a change here?
Sure. I mean, I think with, you know, any general plan amendment, we would take a look at, as you said, the general plan's major strategies, goals, and policies, and then we'd, you know, also factor in any community input we receive, and then use our, you know, professional judgment to then come to a conclusion on that application. And I think in this case, you know, we took a look at, you know, what strategies and goals and policies is this consistent with, and also what it's inconsistent with. And where we landed was that, you know, it made sense in our professional judgment in terms of recommending approval for the general plan amendment, given the context of the surrounding neighborhood here, primarily, I think was, you know, what we'd be looking for.
Thank you.
As well as...
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, again, yeah, in terms, and also just, you know, we thought that the proposal met some of our compatibility goals and policies, so that, again, given that almost the entire surrounding neighborhood, besides the school, is residential neighborhood, that it contextually seems to make sense, in that the land use designation that was applied, the rural residential, was really, is a result of the kind of lower-density zoning from the past that hasn't been effectuated at this point, so.
Great. And I'll just add, before I call on the city attorney, I felt like there were a few other staff reports under the conclusion section that really helped answer that question of, like, helped me understand, oh, here's the reason why we're considering this amendment. And this one, I felt was less, there was less of that there for me to latch on to and understand, well, why are we entertaining this in the conclusion section?
City Attorney?
The only comment I wanted to make was to remind everyone that there are no findings required for general plan amendments. These are purely legislative acts. So, you know, planning has given you the reasons, but you are not required to make findings. You know, you're making a recommendation of the council and give them your reasons for that recommendation, but the council is not required to make findings on a general plan amendment. Purely legislative. Thank you.
Commissioner Bonilla.
Rolando's perfect. Actually, to staff, you raised a great point here regarding community feedback. I'm always interested to hear what neighbors think. Ultimately, they have to live there, they're coexisting together. What was that feedback?
When we had the community meeting, as well as outreach to the neighborhoods, there was actually no feedback from the community.
Which sometimes we interpreted as feedback.
So I'll just add to my, well, actually, I'll just, I'll ask if there are no other comments or questions, if the maker of the motion would like to speak to his motion.
Already had, to some extent, so thank you. I do, I will make one final point, that the surrounding character of the neighborhood is not necessarily defined by the color on the general plan map. It really does require looking at the site, I think, in person. So, I can understand why at some point it was rural residential. I would actually guess that the entire hillside, including the PQP where the school is, was at one time rural residential, because it was on the edge of the city at one point. So, I can understand why it's sort of a latent designation, but I don't feel any reason to change it at this point. So, thank you.
And I agree with a lot of the comments that Commissioner Allen made. As I was reading the staff report, again, I was asking my question, why? Why are we bringing this forward? And, you know, for me, answers to those questions are things like, affordable housing is important, in particular homeless housing is important, maybe this is a good site for tiny homes, for homeless individuals. And I know that we can't necessarily say something like that in a general plan amendment, and I appreciate that the applicant is talking about teacher housing, but without something like a development agreement or something like that, I guess it's speculative, or, you know, we don't know what ultimately is going to happen on the site. And so, I am not inclined to support the motion. I mean, I am inclined, I will be supporting the motion, yes.
That's my fault for not clarifying the motion.
Did you get a second?
Yeah, she seconded.
Yep. So with that, and I'm assuming that we still don't have the screen able to show the voting stuff, we will just do a roll call vote. I want to close the public hearing.
And Commissioner Griswold would like to make a comment.
Although, I'm actually, I'm very much on the fence, so I just, I guess, want to say a few things, which is, the policy of infill development outside of residential, of our growth areas, I understand it, but I also think that there needs to be some flexibility in that, and we look at the development of our ADU policy as like the, you know, the little train that could, the engine that could, in terms of making some headway towards providing more housing and ultimately meeting the housing needs for our region. And when we look at the affordability crisis and affordable housing issues that we're facing, it is largely, I think, a supply and demand issue, in that we are just simply not building enough housing. And it's with that that we need to think about whether limited development, not major high-rises in residential neighborhoods that are not close to public transportation, but whether we need to essentially almost earmark the site for no development, or whether we can allow some limited residential development. If I am not mistaken, residential neighborhood is the lowest-density residential designation that would allow development. Is that correct? Other than rural residential, I should say.
Right, right. There's, I mean, we have agriculture, I mean, some of the other designations that are lower intensity than rural residential do allow some limited residential development, but it's really low-density. Agriculture is like one dwelling unit per 20 acres or something, to that effect. So, yeah, rural residential is kind of your lowest residential neighborhood, or residential designation that you might see more within the urban area of the city, I'd say.
Actually, and the other, the other aspect that I was thinking about in keeping this as a rural residential is that it starts to feel like we are prohibiting development and, as opposed to fulfilling a policy. And in that circumstance, are we imposing on the landowner essentially that you have to keep this as an open space preserve or something of that nature? And so, for that reason, I'm going to come out against the motion and support the proposed general plan amendment, but I do think it's a close call.
And just for fun, I'm going to chime in here, because for me, having been on the general plan task force, like, the important values for the city are around sustainability. Jobs clearly was the leading piece for the general plan, and these days, affordable housing is really key. And, you know, I think about this site, I think about it in a couple ways. One is, where is it best for us to be directing staff to be focusing their efforts? Is it on these small sites where we're going to get low-density development for, you know, maybe it'll be teacher housing, but that's going to be pretty expensive, teacher housing, I would imagine. So in my mind, the affordable housing piece isn't necessarily met by this kind of designation, unless we were to really upzone it and do something high-density there, which is highly unlikely, but could be intriguing. And so from a sustainability perspective, you know, it'd be nice to keep it undeveloped. It is able to be developed as something, but when I, and there isn't really a jobs component piece to this. So, when I weigh those things, to me, it's like, do we want to have our staff here at the City of San Jose that are stretched focusing on this kind of site, or focusing their resources and their attention on really getting the bang for the buck where we want to see development happen? And I just don't see that this is one of those sites that's going to be helping us meet our goals.
Commissioner Allen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I should add a quick clarifying question for staff regarding the rural residential designation. According to the staff report, I don't know if I'm reading this correctly, densities permitted by this land use designation are up to two dwelling units per acre for residential. It's a 2.6-acre site, so theoretically, under rural residential, could they have five dwelling units on this site? If it fits the geology and all the other grading, which they would have to do under RN, too, right? They'd have to meet all of the geology and other requirements there. So, can they, can you confirm that they could build up to five residential units under the RR designation?
Under the PDC, they have, that's not effectuated, it was approved for six residential lots.
Okay. But if, just the land use designation itself, is that going to, will that hold? They could get up to six if they wanted to come back and do a PD, another PD zoning with the current designation?
It'd probably be a little less. I mean, I think with the rural residential, it's probably applied because it's, you know, about almost three acres, and so they had six, so that's why, hence the rural residential. But if they, you know, if someone were to rezone, I mean, we could take a look at that, but because it's less than three, it may be more around five housing.
Yeah, I was just, just having been there, I just don't see how you could, even if you do develop it, how you could fit more than five or six single-family homes in that space anyway, and I think it seems to be graded for that already because of the previous PD. So, I just don't think there's going to be that much of a change in what they can do with the site regardless, so I'm, again, I'm inclined not to change it. But I appreciate all the comments from commissioners and from the applicant.
City Attorney?
Yeah, I just wanted to address one of the comments, which was that staff shouldn't be, should probably redirect its efforts toward other types of projects and whatever, but we are required by law to process applications as they come in, so that is not a choice that staff can make in this instance.
Commissioner Bonilla.
Question of the applicant. I know. I gave you a workout today, right? I was already complimenting him, his jacket coming in, so.
I'm told I need to reopen the public hearing.
They'll do what they, yeah.
Yep. Consider it open.
Open. Can you explain that teacher housing component a little? Because to me, this is a bit about providing housing and employment, to an extent. Give us a sense of commute time for your teachers, how would you actually determine who lives on that housing ballpark, maybe too early of those costs?
Let me, I'm asking the chief financial officer for Valley Christian to come on down. I'm a land use consultant, by the way. My name is Jared Young with Ruth and Goan. I forgot to tell you that in the beginning. Some of you already know me. So I'll ask Steve, excuse me, Rob Bellaton to come down and talk specifically about that, because they have, they have looked at opportunities for housing, and they acquired this site last year in order to actually, in actually to try to solve their own teacher housing problem. So I'll ask Rob Bellaton to answer that.
Thank you.
Thank you. There were a couple of questions. One, you asked about commute times, one you meant, you asked about how it would impact the teachers, what are we trying to do?
I'll make your life a whole lot easier. Give us an understanding of the selection process for teachers.
Okay.
Perhaps maybe too early rent rates, just give you a little...
So, if I may, then let me just start with what the idea was, what we started with. And it was just that, we lose, at the high school level right now, which is actually probably the most difficult area to hire teachers, is we're losing 18% plus per year turnover. And the main reason we're losing is because they're moving out of the area because they can't afford housing. So what we're trying, now, I could, these are directional numbers, not accurate numbers, right? But I mean, I could double salaries of teachers today and take their average salary and double it, and it's still below the median in which they can actually go and afford a single-family home in Santa Clara County right now. So what we're looking to try to do is, how do we take a piece of property, an asset that we have, and change the designation to something that conforms with, I would argue, actually what we have today? The designation is non-conforming with everything else that's surrounding, so could I get a designation that allows me to put more housing units on there so that I can serve as many teachers as possible? Which is why we actually don't have a specific zoning or a specific plan in front of you right now, it's because we don't know what that might be. We don't know, A, what we can afford, and B, we have to figure out what is, what is going to be allowed for us in the first place, and then we're going to try to maximize that so we can impact as many teachers as possible.
And I knew you'd say that, and I just wanted you to say that on the record. For that reason, actually, I will be opposing Commissioner Allen's motion.
Okay.
Thank you. Is there, are there any other comments or questions? All right. Well then, let's go ahead and vote by voice.
Commissioner Allen, is it aye?
No.
Nope. Still on, sorry.
It's okay. Yep, five to two.
Two to five.
Two to five. Yes, motion does not pass. So with that, I would entertain another motion.
I make a motion to...
Motion by Commissioner Oliverio to approve the staff recommendation. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Bonilla.
I will refer to Vice Chair, she came. Sure.
Second by Commissioner Bonilla, since that is who I saw raise his hand with my So, would the maker of the motion like to speak to their motion?
No.
Would the seconder like to speak to their second?
No.
All right. There's no further questions or comments, we'll go ahead and vote by voice, starting with Commissioner Bonilla.
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Aye.
No.
All right. Motion carries, five to two. All right, thank you to the applicant. We're going to go ahead and move on to the next item that was pulled off consent. That is item 7C, and we will start with the staff report.
General Plan 18-004 is an amendment to the Vision San Jose 2040 general plan land use designation, I mean, transportation diagram, to change the land use designation from neighborhood community commercial to mixed-use neighborhood on an approximately 0.44-growth-acre site located on the east side of North Capitol Avenue, approximately 250 feet north of Alumrock Avenue. The subject site is located on the east side of Capitol Avenue, is one parcel, is paved with asphalt, and was previously used as a park and ride lot for Alumrock Light Rail Station. Currently, the site is vacant and has an irregularly long and narrow shape. Limited accessibility to the site is via northbound North Capitol Avenue due to the light rail, which runs down the center of Capitol Avenue. The site is surrounded by North Capitol with a cemetery across the roadway to the west, single-family homes to the east and south, and a one-story commercial complex to the south next to Alumrock Avenue. The proposed mixed-use neighborhood designation is applied to... The proposed mixed-use neighborhood designation is applied to areas intended for development primarily with either townhouse or small-lot, single-family residences, and supports commercial or mixed-use development integrate within the mixed-use neighborhood area. The intent is to preserve existing characters of the neighborhoods to strictly limit new development to infill projects which conform to the existing neighborhood character. The mixed-use neighborhood land use designation allows residential densities up to 30 dwelling units per acre and an FAR floor-air ratio of 0.25 to 2.0. The proposed land use amendment to mixed-use neighborhood is consistent with General Plan compatibility policies CD 4.3 and 4.4, as the development pattern and density will be comparable to existing land uses in the surrounding area. The site is currently functioning as a vacant parking lot. It's constrained due to its linear configuration and lack of lot depth. The mixed-use neighborhood designation will allow for more flexibility for the property to be developed with uses that could be consistent with and contribute to the overall character of the neighborhood. The proposed general plan amendment is consistent with the Vibrant Neighborhoods Policy VN 1.7. It would allow flexibility in types of uses and support development on irregularly shaped and constrained site that will be consistent with the overall character of the neighborhood. Redevelopment under mixed-use neighborhood could further advance the character of the neighborhood compared to the existing vacant parking lot. In terms of outreach, a community meeting occurred on September 12, 2019, and approximately six community members attended and expressed concerns about what could be built on site, and emphasized that any future development should preserve the existing character of the neighborhood. In terms of sequor clearance, an initial study negative declaration was circulated in September 27 to October 17, 2019, and received no public comments. While the conversion of commercial to residential-focused land use is typically not supported in the Vision San Jose 2040 General Plan, other goals and policies in the general plan do support consistent and compatible uses in the neighborhood setting. In this instance, the subject site is not well-suited for commercial uses due to its location off of Alumrock Avenue and constraining characteristics of the site. The property is located outside of the Alumrock Avenue east of 680 Urban Village. It's not visible from Alumrock Avenue, and vehicle accessibility to the site is limited to traffic traveling northbound on North Capitol Avenue. Planning staff has determined that because of the issues unique to the site, that will be, that will significantly limit commercial uses on the property. The general plan's neighborhood compatibility goals outweigh its goals relative to retaining commercial land in this specific incident. Staff recommends the approval of the proposed general plan amendment of mixed-use neighborhood. This concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you. I wanted to invite the applicant up to make a presentation. You have up to five minutes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I thought I should speak first this time rather than answering questions or wondering what your questions might be. So I took the opportunity to just dive in. Staff did a wonderful job of describing some of the issues here. I think if you look at the aerial in front of you, which I think is in front of you, this site is problematic, to say the, to say the least. It's problematic because it's hard to get anything to fit into the neighborhood. As you can see, it's a single-family residential. It was zoned R1A. It was annexed a number of years ago. This was a former VTA park and ride lot. So the type of development that's going to occur here, even if it were to be a viable commercial site, would probably be, the only way to get anything to occur here is on a podium, a podium, second-floor office, retail. As many of you know, retail probably doesn't work very, very well on second floor. You can, you might have an office. So once you start to develop above the first, above the ground level, you begin to automatically affect the adjacent residential neighborhood. We looked at it and thought, if we're going to affect the residential neighborhood, we're better off affecting it by residential uses than by office or retail uses. And that's why we have to, to the question that got asked on the last one, why now? Why are you proposing this? That's the primary reason. This, once again, the difficulty here was, we couldn't bring forward a kind of a plan development zoning at the same time because we weren't sure that, given the city's policies on conversions of job-producing lands, we were a little timid about this one, although we believe it's the right thing to do. I will tell you that, given the nature of the site, and you can see just by looking at it, that while there is a housing crisis in the city, and many, many individuals in the city, including many of you, including the chair who voiced an opinion earlier tonight in favor of affordable housing, this type of project would be affordable by design. These are going to be very small units. They could be studios. They could be one-bedrooms. There might be a two-bedroom in it. But it gets really difficult, given the depth of the unit, to get all that in there. So again, I hope you would vote in favor of this so that we can move forward and bring, and look forward to in 2020, bringing a plan development zoning forward that shows you specifically what we could do on the site. Thank you very much.
Looks like there's a question for you from Commissioner Yezny.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Several years ago, when you and I were both a lot younger, the city council for a while reserved the right to interview candidates for senior management positions. And when I was proposed for, as a principal planner in the planning department, I was summoned before a city council committee to be interviewed. And I remember this very vividly because Councilmember Alvarado said that the city had not treated her district well, that they had been the place where poor-quality buildings, poorly-designed projects were crammed onto unsuitable sites without any regard for the residential neighborhoods or the residents themselves. And she asked me if I would commit to stop approving that kind of development, if I would guarantee her, basically, that the planning department would require a higher standard for the east side. And I told her I would, because I had already gotten the same, had the same discussion with the Director of Planning, who told me he'd already made that same commitment. So I'm asking you, what's going to go on this site? And will it be a quality development designed appropriately? Cramping a lot of one-bedroom studio apartments onto this tiny site could be a blight, or it could be a great opportunity for affordable housing in a, in a city that needs it. So I'd like to hear you commit to this being a high-quality. I know we can't make it a condition, but I'd like somebody to promise that it will be good.
Okay. I guess I would answer that by saying, that was then, and now is now. The city general plan in Vision 2040 has standards that require high-quality development throughout the city, whether it's in the east side or the south side, or in my own neighborhood of Willow Glen, or my own, wherever I live. Number one. Number two is, we have design guidelines that have been around for a while, but are being updated by the planning department that are going to require quality development to occur on the site. I think the question about whether they're studios or whether they're one-bedrooms is really a question to be asked and answered in the future relative to what is the market. Again, if you go back to the issue of affordable housing, affordable housing can be done in the ways like First Community Housing, for example. I'm a board member of First Community Housing. You can do that type of housing. Or you can do private-sector housing that's simply done by the private, financed independently and privately, and the units are sized appropriate to the market conditions out there. So I'm guessing that it will be a combination of one-bedrooms, perhaps a couple of two-bedrooms, and some studios. The interesting part of that question for me comes down to how many units can we achieve on the site? If we can achieve 30 units on the site, then you have flexibility about the mix of units. If you can achieve 15 on the site, you don't, you're probably going to have, you know, fewer two-bedrooms and more studios. And so that's the issue that we're going to have to try to figure out as we move forward. I assume that I might be involved in that as it goes forward. But without this particular action tonight, we can't even move forward with that. But I appreciate your question. Thank you.
And I appreciate your answer. The size of the units will be critical, and don't, small units don't mean a low-quality project.
Correct.
But another old council member, Joe Head, used to say, good design doesn't have to be expensive.
Right.
It just has to be done right. So, and the residential design guidelines certainly do give us a starting point. But yes, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right. At this point, I wanted to bring, oh, Commissioner Bonilla. Commissioner, have you signed in? Do you know how to use the?
I've used it, but it doesn't like me. So it doesn't. We can figure that out. Let me get to this, to the applicant, please. So I walked your site this morning, as I live about 15 minutes from the site. And I always have to make that right on North Capitol, and I see it every day. So I understand how awkward it is. But I think to piggyback off of what Commissioner Yezny was saying, what conversations have you had with key community groups, particularly right now when that neighborhood specifically really wants to be involved and have some say in what buildings are going to look like in the community? Who have you talked to besides the one meeting the city has had?
We have, we have not engaged the community at this point in time. I will just tell you personally, typically, when we're talking about general plan amendments on small sites where we're not, we're not making kind of substantial density changes, in this particular case, we are, you might define as a substantial change from commercial to residential.
Right.
But as I described before, whether we have a one level of residential on a podium or we have office on a podium, as a practical matter, there's not much of a difference there. And the other component of, that we're usually talking with communities about is additional traffic, access, accessibility. In this particular case, it's more than likely if something occurs on this site, it's going to use the first, the ground floor, as is, it'll be repaved. But the driveways will be reused. There'll be a podium above it, and then structure above that. So needless to say, once we get into a plan development zoning, that's a time when many developers and their representatives are fully engaging the community. And how do we design something that doesn't look down on their backyards? We're always very sensitive to that. We've done a little site planning on that, and we know we can do that kind of stuff. So, but direct answer to the question that we haven't, haven't done any outreach yet.
And I agree with you. I don't see commercial being sustainable there. You don't have natural foot traffic. It's just not the space for that. Thank you for that.
Commissioner Griswold has a question for the applicant. We like to wait until you're walking away so we can make you walk back.
Yeah, Your Honor.
I figure if I turn away, maybe she'll go, okay, he's gone.
Yeah, yo-yo right now. Looking at the site, it strikes me that for commercial, and I'm not sure that there's a debate that commercial will be difficult on this, but that it would be nearly impossible to provide a first-floor commercial structure and provide parking. Is that fair to say?
When you say first floor, you mean ground floor?
Yeah, like a ground floor.
Correct. There's no opportunity to do that because you don't have enough parking on the site. You know, if you took the number of parking spaces that are right now, done the analysis, you could probably do about 6,000 square feet of, let's use the word office instead of commercial. That's about how big you could make it until you, as the triangle gets to a certain size, you wouldn't develop a building there because it's no, there's no space for, you know, hallways in a room or something.
Right.
So it's about 6,000 square feet. If you took that same kind of 6,000-square-foot first-floor space and, and, you know, made it into, you know, let's call it five to six to 700-square-foot units, you can, you can do the math. It gets, it gets, it gets a little easier. And the other thing about it is that we kind, again, we developed a little plan, and I can't show it to you because, in reality, the environmental review process kind of almost prohibits me from doing that, prohibits you from considering it as I showed it to you. So I'm kind of at a, I'm at a point where I, I know what I've done and looked at this, and I, but I can't, I can only describe it to you. But when you shape residential, you can, you can move it further away from the residential to the, let's call it, the east. And you can do things like put the, the walkway on the first floor so that the units aren't facing into the backyard of the units that are there. So there's lots of tools that we have to, to create a residential development that impacts that residential neighborhood to the, to the greatest degree that we can.
Thank you.
I'm not moving.
I think you're dismissed. Thank you.
Got it. Is it working now?
It is.
Look at that. To the applicant. There you go. I mean, I gave you the look. I gave you the look. So, for my own edification here, so the concern for some is you'd want to work around the ability for people living up top to be able to look down to the apartments.
Correct.
And then you've got folks on the other side looking towards the cemetery. Feels like a stretch to me. I get what you want to do. Seeing that property, it feels like a stretch to me. It feels squeezed. It feels like you're trying to do a bit of gymnastics here to make it work, and I can understand why. If I were the property owner, I would as well. But to me, if we're looking at small units, if we're looking at, it just feels like a stretch to me, given the facts that are in front of me right now. So I guess my question now is to the city attorney, and this is where I can acknowledge for the record, I'm sure some people will enjoy this, as a rookie, what would happen if we were to vote against this tonight? Would the applicant have an opportunity to have community conversations, for example? What would happen to the applicant?
What happens is that your vote tonight is a recommendation to the city council. And the city council would determine whether or not that they believe this general plan amendment is appropriate.
Got it. Thank you for that.
I might also note that this general plan will not take effect until the effective date of a rezoning.
Right.
For the reason, there's a new state law that requires consistency with, of charter cities, the zoning with the general plan. So that's new to us. But that means that every application that you have now will also be required to have the rezoning with it. These were already in process. So there were two of them tonight, Valley Christian and this one, that have that provision. So they will be back for a rezoning as well. And you can consider more detail at that point as well. If the rezoning doesn't go through, the general plan doesn't take effect.
Got it. Thank you.
But, but again, both of those are recommendations to the city council because they're both legislative act.
Okay. Thank you.
Chair, if I could just provide one more answer, and at the risk of shooting myself in the foot, what I would tell you is that if you were to approve this tonight, consistent with what the city attorney said, and we came forward with, which will be a plan development zoning, and you believe that we, that you still have concerns about, that you've articulated tonight, then certainly, as one commissioner or the body of commission could deny the plan development zoning. We have no, we have no right to apply a development zoning approval. It's a discretionary approval, and you could recommend denial, and the city council, if it agreed with the commission, would recommend it. And our opportunity then would be to come back, try again with a different project until we got it right.
Got it. Thank you.
Commissioner Oliverio?
Thank you, Chair. City Attorney, if you can remind me, when the city chooses to buy land for a park from a private property owner, is it based on the zoning or the highest and best use? Okay, thank you.
Usually, but I'm also not an expert at eminent domain law. So, you know, I don't, I don't run that. So I don't know what we have paid, for example, in the past for park, you know, for parkland and for other types of land like that. It just depends. And obviously, this would be difficult. But, you know, a lot of times, it's highest and best use. But it's also based upon general plan designation and zoning. It depends. Arguments can be made either way.
I am seeing no more requests for questions of you, so I think.
I'll wait till you close the public hearing.
I think you're okay to go. We do have some folks. We have one speaker card. So I'm going to call down Paul Larden, I think is how to pronounce the name. I think is how to pronounce the name.
Hello. Landon is the last name. So I live right there on Avenue A, looking at Avenue A on Paula. So that area is very heavily impacted with a lot of, let's just say, multifamilies living in some of those houses, not necessarily legally. So there's a very high amount of traffic on that roadway. And I've sent a lot of stuff to Magdalena Carrasco, which is our council member for that area, asking, "When are they going to fix this road?" We report potholes all the time. There's no curbs or gutters. For the most part, Avenue B, which is the next section down, all the soils are exposed, and it just looks like a big muddy mess when it starts to rain. So the whole area needs a little bit of revamp, especially the commercial project, or the commercial property right there at the end of Paula. Their parking extends into Paula, so I've actually been hit there because people, they just start moving before they even look back. That's kind of what I'm afraid is going to happen if this is developed at all. All that parking is going to impact my street because there's no parking on Capitol. It's two-lane. Already, some of the residents that live a little bit further down have blocked the road. They just put cones out and block a lane when they're moving in and out with their vehicles because, like I said, some of those houses have a lot of families living in them. So I don't want to see any type of residential or anything happening there unless it is just a parking lot. That's kind of what it should be used for, auxiliary parking maybe for that neighborhood until the housing stuff is figured out. But the viability of putting anything there, too, restricts it just to the section next to Avenue A. People are going to want to park right there when they're having friends over. It's going to impact all that. No one's going to have anywhere to park. I've had my driveway blocked before because there was so little parking when people are having parties on the weekends. So it's just not a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Oliverio, did you have a question for...
Yeah, I had a question for the speaker. Sir, I appreciate you coming out and sharing your perspective, living on Avenue A. So that was a former county pocket, why you don't have the gutters or storm sewers and kind of...
Yeah, we've asked before, whether we were county or not, and we never got an answer. It says San Jose on all our paperwork.
Sure. No, that's a legacy infrastructure from the county since they didn't do that, and that's a non-planning commission item, but I understand that. But being that this is your neighborhood, you've been there how long?
A little over two years.
Okay, two years. Fair enough. You understand, though, that private property owners have the right to develop, and the concept of being a parking lot forever is not possible.
That's understandable.
In your world of what you envisioned for your neighborhood, what would be acceptable there?
For that? I mean, if they wanted to do a park or something, there's no parks in the area that are accessible. The closest park's on McKee, it's the Chinese Park. It's adjacent to whatever school is right there.
You've come to Overfell Gardens?
I think so.
Yeah.
Yeah. They close it at 5:00.
Sure.
So when I get off work, I have no park to access.
Got it.
The school around the corner, they lock all their gates when schools close. So there's no parks miles from this location.
Okay.
Some of the sidewalks right there are actually a little bit beyond north of Avenue A, aren't even the new ADA compliant.
Yep.
You know?
Well, yeah, that's an issue we have across the city for certain, but I wanted...
Well, that's what I'm saying. You build something there, and then, so say they have disabled people that want to go to the target of Capitol just a little bit, you know?
Sure. Well, I appreciate it. Just nice to have your perspective and have someone from the meeting, actually, there. So thank you.
So we have no other speaker cards, and so at this point, I wanted to invite the applicant back up for an additional five minutes. He is shaking his head. Yeah. So I will go ahead and close the public hearing and ask my fellow commissioners if they have any questions for staff or would like to put a motion on the floor. Commissioner Allen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd be happy to move to staff's recommendation at this time.
There's a motion to support the staff recommendation. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Griswold. Any questions, discussion? Commissioner Bonilla.
Always something with me with technology. Tell me about your community meeting. Who showed up? Six people, right? What were their concerns?
Their concern was understanding what's a general plan amendment. They thought something was going to be built there.
Got it.
And we do get phone calls about that, and they were pretty focused on what could be built, but they basically, they don't want to change the character of their neighborhood.
What could be built according to the poll of six?
They basically say something they cannot see from their neighborhood. Most of them are directly adjacent to the, and they don't want anything too high, too tall. They kept thinking there'd be a tower there of some sort. But it's a narrow lot, so they had similar questions. What could really be built within these constraints?
Thank you for that. If I may continue, I'm not going to be able to vote in support of the motion. I think, candidly to the applicant, if you can make this project work, then the city should hire you to solve all of our housing issues. Because that is truly, truly gymnastics, to make that work. On the one hand, you've got residents that don't want to be looked down into their, you know, folks looking into their yard. On the other hand, you've got residents who have a beautiful view of a cemetery within a very compact and, clearly we all agree, very awkwardly shaped site. Now, I do agree with Commissioner Oliverio that private property rights, something needs to be there. I just don't see how housing works there. I live there, 15 minutes. Every day, I have to make that right. I see it. I don't like that it's a parking lot. I'd love to see something there. I just don't see housing being that there, that item, given some of the community issues as well that I think you're absolutely going to run into once that project takes, would take that next step if this body feels it needs to happen. So I, for that reason, will vote against Commissioner Allen's motion.
Commissioner Allen.
Yeah, I just had a quick question for staff, or the applicant possibly might have to answer again. As far as ownership of the property, is this something that was VTA's and then was purchased by the private property owner? So it was never, and the city never considered purchasing it from VTA. VTA never offered it. There's no, I know there are policies for schools, if they have surplus land that's been open space, they are required to offer it to a public agency, but since this wasn't open space before and that doesn't apply, I'm guessing this is just a sale of property, and there was never an opportunity to make this a park or open space?
Yeah, I'm not aware of whether the city inquired or looked into or was offered the right to purchase the property.
Yeah. Because honestly, that's to points that have been made already, as far as, actually to Commissioner Bonilla's point, the gymnastics that will take to develop something here that's viable, fits the neighborhood, and meets all their concerns, is going to be pretty significant. So I'm actually completely inclined to allow the applicant to try their best. But I do think, if we could go back in a perfect world, just claim this site, it would be a perfect little spot for a pocket park. But at this point, I'd just like to see something there, period, because it's, right now, it's just taking up space, and it is right on a light rail line. This is very much different from the previous property we just examined under 7A. So I think that in this case, while it is also an awkward space, I think that the prevailing policies that it supports outweigh the negatives. So that's why I made the motion, and I don't have anything else to say. Thank you.
I wanted to ask a question of staff, and that is, if you were to put on your most creative set of glasses to look at this site through, and knowing the neighborhood context and the community, our needs as a city, the transportation context here, I mean, what would you say we can do and would be good for the city and this community on this site?
I mean, I think for the proposal, again, we had to look, and we don't control what is proposed when it's a private applicant like this. That was, we analyzed the proposal that was submitted. So, yeah, the site, I mean, it's a difficult site, and that obviously factored into our analysis. I mean, I think the idea of a park came up a couple times, and I think that certainly could make sense at this location, but given that it's privately held, we would have to work within the confines of the property ownership and what's being proposed. And we felt that the proposal gave some additional flexibility for the site to hopefully be developed in a way that contributes more to this neighborhood rather than a vacant parking lot.
And then, thank you for that. Another question. Can you just quickly run through, what is the standard operating procedure for community outreach on a general plan amendment? And I ask because this community in particular, not small community, I mean, larger community, like represented by Somoos Mayfair and the broader community, has been pretty active and vocal around development issues along this corridor. And so it seems to me, they've made it pretty clear that they want to be involved, and I'm just wondering, what does that look like in a standard way? And then, given that there has been a lot of folks in the community saying, "Please, please involve us," what have you done to meet those "please"?
So we have the standard outreach with the whole, this project was 1,000 feet around, and we also outreach to the council district office, who are more involved with the community leaderships. And Somoos Mayfair, a representative did reach out to me to understand what's going on, and we explained it was a general plan amendment, and they just left at that. They just, the community members were more concerned they didn't understand what it was versus there's no actual development here and the conversation stopped there.
Oh, sorry. Commissioner Oliverio and then Commissioner Griswold.
Yeah, just, I think any vacant parcel in any council district, regardless of zip code, there will be individuals that live in that community who want nothing to change with that piece of land because that's what they're used to. And the dilemma is to us and to planning staff, what is acceptable? I mean, if you look at the lot, we've obviously discussed it, it's an odd lot, very narrow. Maybe it fits two houses. I mean, ultimately, the value of that property is, it's up to a formal approval on what could actually go there. To Commissioner Allen's comment, when the VTA provided it, it was provided to all public agencies, and then somewhere along the line, the city of San Jose chose to not procure it. But times can change, and with the applications that are coming down the pipe along Allen Rock that could potentially produce a generous amount of park fees, there may be more flexibility for that. But those are unknowns. Ultimately, for us, if no one likes any structure on there, then we're all in trouble, right? I mean, the current zoning would allow you to do something, but it's not possible because of the market. So then it's to us to, should they be allowed to make a go at it versus being a surface parking lot? I'd imagine being a surface parking lot also comes with its issues because you may have potential loitering and those types of things, which could happen in a park or a parking lot or in a street corner. Those things happen anywhere. So, you know, it's been said often that nothing's getting approved unless it's good. I don't think an empty lot is a desirable thing for a city. So I think ultimately, I'm inclined to support them to make a go at it and then see what that is. But I think the applicant has heard from the commission hesitancy or caution, so you have to go into this with that understanding, that level of risk, right? So I'll support the motion.
Commissioner Griswold. So I want to kind of second the comments of Commissioner Oliverio. I feel like the applicant and owner here, really, bottom line shouldn't be saddled with a land use designation that's infeasible for development. And what I'm hearing from staff and the applicant is that really, neighborhood, community commercial is not feasible on this property. And so the question is, what is going, what can go there? Because we don't want to prohibit all development. And as Commissioner Oliverio expressed, I don't think that it is in anyone's best interest to have a vacant land unless it's a truly public space like a park. But it's not. It's privately held property at this point. In terms of the concerns about what can go there, I think we focused on densification, but if we actually look at the massing, overall mass of the buildings allowable under neighborhood community commercial, it allows a far up to 3.5. Under the mixed-use neighborhood, it has a maximum of 2.0. So under the neighborhood concerns of a giant tower, theoretically, feasibility of construction permitting, you actually could have a greater mass under the existing designation than under the proposed designation. And the other aspect of the proposed designation is that it contains a provision that the intent is to preserve existing character of neighborhoods and to strictly limit new development to infill projects which conform to the existing neighborhood character. So there are some protections built into the mixed-use neighborhood, along with the flexibility, along with a smaller overall mass that would be allowed, that really could actually better meet the needs of the neighborhood. So for that reason, I would be supporting the proposed general plan amendment. So, thank you. I have another question for staff. Can you, maybe you don't know the answer to this, but can you give a sense, and I agree with a lot of the comments, this is a weird, oddly-shaped parcel in a strange place, and so that's why I was asking, in an ideal world, what could you do here? How do you see this site developing in a way that would benefit the city and the community, the immediate community? Because I'm hard-pressed, I'm looking at the site, and I'm like, what do you do here other than a park? And so I'm wondering if you can comment on, if we were to support this general plan amendment, how does that change the value of the land? Does it increase the value of the land? Does it decrease the value of the land? I would imagine we are increasing the value of the land. Is that correct?
I guess it would depend. Probably be a better question for a property assessor, but I mean, I could just say that the proposed land use designation would allow a wider range of uses than what currently could be allowed, just broadly, given that residential is typically going to be more valuable than commercial. It would seem that the value of the property could be greater than the current designation, but I can't speak specifically on that. It would probably depend on an assessment of the property, both with the current and proposed.
I mean, my guess is that the value of the land would increase because it's going, as described to us, it's difficult under the current designation to build anything. So I'm also wondering if you can comment on the, so if we were to build 30 homes to the acre on this site, as was potentially suggested, although that's probably on the high end of something that would be possible, can you comment a little bit? I know we're getting ahead of ourselves, but this is, since we're looking at a yellow map with brown next to it, that adjacency and how you would do that transition potentially between folks who are in a single-family detached home to something that's taller? I mean, given that it's so small, is there enough space to do that in a way that's respectful of the existing homes that are there?
Yeah, that would be, there definitely would be some challenges, given the configuration of the site and the size of it. But, yeah, we would, if a project's proposed, we'll look at it based on our general plan policies on urban design and compatibility, and then weigh it against our residential or commercial, depending on what the proposal was, on the city's design guidelines and standards.
I guess where, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I guess where I'm leaning is, given the constraints of the site and just how odd it is, where it's located, knowing what I know about the community, although I'm not an expert, I'm inclined, the applicant purchased... an expert, I'm inclined, you know, the applicant purchased this property knowing full well the constraints of it. And so, you know, it's a gamble. It's a risk. Now, they're seeking a general plan amendment to be able to do something with the site. And so, I'm inclined to oppose the motion, given that, you know, it could potentially increase the value of the land. And I just, I guess I just want to give the council one more opportunity to say, ah, maybe we could purchase this site as a park. Any other questions or comments? All right, we'll go ahead and, oh, Commissioner Oliverio.
Oh, I'm going to support the motion, but I would like, if possible, of the staff to contain that in the comments that the commission or at least some commissioners thought that a park should be considered, since that's the council's purview, then I'd be ultimately comfortable with the motion. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'll happily add that as an amendment to my original motion.
Great. All right, we'll do a roll call vote, starting with Commissioner Allen.
Hi.
No?
Hi.
All right, motion passes five to two. All right. Then that takes us through the, all the items that were pulled from consent. There are no general plan, public hearing items, so I'm going to close the general plan hearing.
Sorry, could I make, could we make a correction, if I may, for the, for nine here on the, that item? It reads right now, closed general plan, public hearing. I apologize, that's, we would like to continue the general plan hearing to December 4th, 2019.
Okay. Is there anything I need to...
What was the date?
So, that's going to be December 4th, 2019.
All right. Then that brings us to item 10, referrals from city council boards, commissions, or other agencies.
Can you do a mo, can you ask for a motion to continue the general plan?
I would like to seek a motion to continue the general plan hearing.
So moved. Whoever had it first.
December 4th. So, so moved by Commissioner Bonilla and seconded by Commissioner Yezny. You all were raising your hands.
Who's first?
Yeah.
I'm leaving it at that.
Bonilla and Yezny.
Yezny.
Thank you.
Stop telling me what to do. I know what I'm seeing. All right, so moving on then, it looks like there are no...
Who's the vote on?
Oh, I need to take a vote on that. Any questions or comments on the motion on the table? Then let's do a roll call vote. Commissioner Allen.
Hi.
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 All right, motion carries. All right, item 10, it looks like there are no items there. So, we're on to item 11, good and welfare. So, item 11A, report from city council.
Okay, there's a lot on here. I know, like, there's two historic landmark designations and Mills Act contracts were approved by the city council, including five homes in Martin Avenue in the Hensley Historic District or Historic Area Neighborhood, as well as a house, the Suzy Good, Windsor and Suzy Goodenough House at 1725 Dry Creek Road. I don't know anything about these properties, but I'm very intrigued. I want to research more. The council approved a conforming rezoning condition use permit at 184 South 11th Street to transition from a single-room occupancy to residential service facility. The council also approved our quarterly zoning code ordinance amendments, which you guys heard not that long ago, including ADU provisions. The council approved with a memorandum from Foley, approving a memorandum with Foley as well, a conventional rezoning and condition use permit for a property located on Union Avenue. This is the Belmont Village project.
It's passed?
Yeah, it passed. And then yesterday was Housing Day. There was five items on the agenda I had to leave after the first two. There was the cost of development item, and that passed. Staff recommendation passed. It was nine zero or 11, excuse me. Everyone voted for it except Peralas, 10-1. And the sort of takeaway from that was it's still, in most cases, not, the rents are not high enough to cover the cost of construction to build in most of San Jose, except West San Jose. There also is the fee development framework, to come up with a framework where the count, to provide more transparency to development community and the community and the council and staff on what the fees are for housing development, as well as a framework that the council can use when they are considering either raising or lowering fees or adding additional fees in the future. That, staff recommendation passed on that. There was inclusionary housing ordinance proposed revisions. That was, that was approved, and I won't get into the details of that. And there was a lot of discussion on that one, as well as the Ellis Act. And once again, they didn't, weren't approving changes to the inclusionary impact ordinance or also the Ellis Act. They were seeking direction and it will be coming back to council with actual changes at a later date. But staff proposed Ellis Act changes in that. That was a six-five vote, largely consistent with some additions on staff recommendation Ellis Act. Chappy Jones had some additions which you'll have to read. I won't get into it, it's very complicated. And then the other item on here, which for some reason wasn't listed on here, was the getting staff direction on fees for the extension of the high-rise incentive for high-rise residential development. And that was also a six-five vote with staff recommendation being carried by the council. So, that, the council meeting ended, I understand, at two minutes to midnight, which is when everyone turns into pumpkins. And I think the rule is now that they end at midnight, so they just made it. And that concludes a report on council actions. Yeah, these are the quarterly ones. Let's see, there are, what's that? There were just minor amendments to Title 24. There were some related to ADU provisions, other cleanup stuff. Yeah, well, it's, yeah, we do. Yeah, or it's maybe not quarterly. It may be two to three times a year, but we call it quarterly. I can read everything if you like, or I can, yeah, okay.
All right, moving on to 11B, review and approve action minutes from 10/23/19.
Madam Chair, I'll move approval.
All right, there's a motion to approve from Commissioner Allen. Is there a second?
Yes.
Was that a yes from Commissioner Oliverio on seconding? And the city attorney has some corrections.
So, the motion, the motion I'm hoping will include, we can amend to include these corrections. On item, let me see, 7B, beginning on page four of six and continuing on to five of six, there is, the motion included a change that was handed out by staff at the time, and it's not reflected here. I don't have it with me this evening, but we need to add that. So, with your permission, we'll just get what staff handed out and added. Second, item 7B on page four. Additionally, if you take a look where the item begins, there are two items. First, it talks about the, let me see, the special use permit. Then it has two options under the tentative map permit. The first option is not reflected on the next page in terms of what was approved. It only includes option two and not option one. So, it needs to repeat the language that option one is one parcel to be re-subdivided into no more than 295 condominium units, and it should say residential condominium units in both sections, including a maximum of, okay, I don't know exactly what this means. Okay. Excuse me. No more than 295 condominium units, including a maximum of 290 residential condominium units and a maximum of five commercial condominium units. So, that first option needs to be reflected again on page five of six, where we talk about the action relating to the vesting tentative map and added. So, with those corrections, thank you.
Yep. That's acceptable.
The maker of the motion, yep. The maker of the motion says, yes, that is acceptable. And is the seconder okay with that too? All right. Any discussion on the motion?
No, I just thank the city attorney for the catch.
All right, we'll do a roll call vote. My voice?
Hi.
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 Sounds like a choir. All right, motion carries. Moving on to 11C, subcommittee formation reports and outstanding business. Is there anything?
Yeah, so there's the, I'm sorry, I'm not sure where we are, but we need to talk about the planning commission retreat. Is that this one?
I think that's the next one.
Okay, nothing on this.
Okay, 11D, let's talk about the planning commission retreat.
So, the planning commission retreat is on the morning of November 22nd, and the main item that we're going to be talking about with the commission is the plethora or laundry list of state legislation related to housing. So, Martina and Vera will be sharing that with you. It's kind of rocking our world on many different levels and we'll, it'll be a very fun conversation and a jaw-dropping conversation. Also, we will be touring the Second Street Studios following that portion of retreat. I believe it's at 8:30. Let me, let me go back to my... Is it eight?
Agenda says eight.
Yeah, I don't, it's, my email that I'm reading doesn't, says the attached agenda and it's not attached.
It is, in prior years, it's been 8:30, and I confirmed that about a month ago with your staff. So, if you could confirm that also, as well as the location, I'm getting, you know, questions here.
Okay.
On location, thanks, if you could send something out, Michael.
Sure, and the agenda, once it's finalized, will be going out as well. So, you'll be getting an email on that. Yes, I assume so. I mean, we'll let you know for sure the exact start time and location, but I would assume for now, it's always at City Hall.
Yeah, Sylvia Doe mentioned to me a day ago when we were talking about the agenda that it's going to begin at City Hall, and then she's arranged for transportation to the other two locations.
Correct.
Commissioner Allen, did you have a question?
No, I'm just pointing out that in the planning commission agenda, page seven, I'm sorry, page eight of 12, it always contains our schedule for the rest of the year and it notes the planning commission retreat in T332 at 8:00 AM on the 22nd. So, whatever needs to be updated or clarified there should also be reflected in that document as well.
We'll confirm.
Great. Thank you.
All right, moving on to item 11E, the public record. Not seeing anything? We will go ahead and adjourn. Thank you all.